All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for the District of Squamish for Tuesday, April 28. My name is Councilor Jenna Stoner, and I will be chairing this meeting as Acting Mayor for April. [speaking in Quechua] We are meeting on the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Council, we have a slightly amended agenda that we will be looking to for this afternoon, simply to add a motion to close after Section 3.3. So if that is all right with Council, I will get a motion to adopt the amended agenda, please. Moved by Councilor Herford, seconded by Mayor Elliott. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Do I need to reread the electronic bylaw components? I don't actually. Is it here in front of me? No, it's not. I think I should be able to remember this by heart. Council, for those of you who are participating electronically, please remember to mute your devices at all times unless you are speaking. Maybe I do need it in front of me. Thank you. For those who are on video or if you are just on audio, please just make a motion or let me know if you are disconnecting and/or reconnecting to the meeting so that we can record that in the minutes. If you are looking to speak, just identify yourself to the chair, either if you're on video, raising your hand, or by simply stating "Chair" if you're on audio, and I will add you to the speakers list. With respect to a vote, remember that you do not need to vote in favor. You only need to state a nay vote. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting, and if council members have any technical difficulties, please text our General Manager of Corporate Services with any technical difficulties, and they will try and fix that for you. If their technical difficulties are on our end, then we will recess the meeting up to for up to 10 minutes to try and address those technical difficulties and get us all back on track. With that, I will hand it over. Our first item is transit update, and we have BC Transit on the line, so I believe I'm handing it over to Dora Gunn or directly over to BC Transit. I'm not sure. I'll hand it over to Dora Gunn. She can introduce the BC Transit folks.
Either way, I can introduce our BC Transit staff. So, good morning, Mayor and Councilor. I'm Dora Gunn, sustainability coordinator for the District of Squamish. Good afternoon, not good morning, apologies. We have two staff with us today from BC Transit, and he'll provide the presentation. Rob Ringma, Senior Manager of Government Relations, and Bronson Bolavant are Senior Transit Planner. I'll pass it over to them now.
Yeah, thank you, Dora. Thank you, Mayor, Chair, and Counselors. Just wait for the presentation to load up. Perfect. Oh, yes, so my name's Rob Ringma. I'm the Senior Manager of Government Relations for BC Transit, and assisting and working with me today will be Bronson Bolavant, who's one of our transit planners here for BC Transit. So on Slide 2, you'll see our agenda for today. I'm just going to quickly go over our new BC Transit strategic plan, then we'll talk a little bit about an update. Obviously, lots going on in the world of transit right now with the effects of COVID. We'll talk a little bit about the summer 2020 service change and some of the effects there, as well as go over some of the three-year TIPS priorities and future expansions, and just some adjustments that we've had to make to those as a result of the current situation we're in. So on Slide 3, you'll see our strategic plan and our mission and vision. So, you know, strategic plans are important, obviously, to guide decision-making of organizations such as BC Transit. We hadn't updated our strategic plan in quite a few years with the new CEO, Aaron Pinkerton, and the new board, Chair of Board. It seemed like an appropriate time for us to update our mission and vision as an organization to really reflect some of the changes we were seeing in our communities and just in how people are utilizing transit. So in developing our strategic plan, it was basically a 16-month process, so a pretty involved process that included with BC Transit employees, our local government partners, their staff, operating companies, key stakeholders, and it really included a variety of different methods, workshops, open houses, and surveys in communities and across the province to really work on coming up with our strategic plan. And of course, it's available online, bctrans.com, the full document. I've really just kind of given a quick one-page snapshot of our mission and vision, but definitely some of the key themes we heard was that communities are really looking to address some of the challenges they're seeing when it comes to climate change, growing populations, increasing congestion, regionalization of services, and affordability. And we also heard that public transit services do offer some benefits that are meaningful to individuals and their communities meet these challenges. You know, transit makes it possible for communities to reshape themselves, reduce their reliance on single-utрен vehicles and fossil fuels, can help with affordability issues, and obviously access to community services. So our new vision statement, which is your best transportation solution, really captures that spirit and optimism and the reality of what BC Transit is and what we can achieve moving forward. And I think, you know, although today we recognize we may not be the best in all aspects of what we do, you know, this statement gives us and staff and everybody at BC Transit really an aspirational goal to work towards every day. But I think that really is what a vision, from an employee perspective, what that really should deliver. So our vision and mission also recognize that communities, again, are facing these challenges and that we have a role to play as part of that solution for some of those challenges, both today and in the future. And, you know, we're just really excited to strive towards this vision moving forward. So next slide is Slide 4. So, of course, we launched that strategic plan in late May and then subsequently in March. As we all know, the COVID-19 situation really started to materialize. BC Transit has had to be really flexible in our approach to adjust to this ongoing situation. And I really just wanted to take a minute to summarize some of the steps we've already taken to ensure that passenger and staff safety are being taken care of while we adjust to the changes in ridership and transit use. So we've already implemented the following COVID measures, enhanced COVID measures across the province, and they include enhanced cleaning procedures, not only on buses, but also in our BC Transit facilities. We moved to implementing rear door loading, and that resulted in non-fair collection to help increase physical distancing for our operators. From a passenger perspective, we started and have limited passenger capacity to support that physical distancing on board buses. Right now, we started at 50% of regular capacity, and we've actually lowered it to 40% of our regular capacity on buses. We've given our bus drivers actually the ability to kind of self-enforce that and monitor that situation as they're going through their day. We've also enhanced the red line for passengers to stand behind, and that includes in our systems with Next Ride, automating announcements to reinforce physical distancing on buses. On our light-duty buses, we've also implemented vinyl panels to protect our operators. Obviously, on our light-duty buses with only having front loading, we can't do rear loading, so we needed to implement some equipment that would help protect both our operators and passengers. And then obviously, we continue to have ongoing communication to staff and customers about proper hygiene and physical distancing procedures that they can be implementing. So these are some of the things, and I say some, but it's a pretty exhaustive list of different actions that we've already taken, and we realize that we're prepared and need to be prepared to implement additional measures should this situation change of progress. So Slide 5, I just want to throw this slide up. This is actually a slide on ridership provincial-wide. As you can see, in terms of impacts, there's been a significant decline in ridership across BC Transit, as well, we know, in translink systems have also experienced similar declines. This graph, you can see the most dramatic drop was in Week 12, which is actually the week of March 16. That's the week that the province really implemented the physical distancing measures that we're seeing today. And currently, across the province, we're trending at about a provincial average of a 70% reduction of ridership. We'll get to, and Bronson will speak a little bit more, some localized ridership effects in Squamish. But, you know, the good news is, of all things, is that these declines have leveled out over the past few weeks, and we hope to, as the situation improves, as some of the physical distancing measures are reduced, and we see improvement in the overall health situation in British Columbia, that we'll start to see some of those ridership effects start to rise. So just looking at some of the, sorry, next slide, Slide 6, BC Transit COVID-19 impacts. So as mentioned, ridership's been obviously impacted, but now it seems to have flattened out. But the real questions that remain are, how long will this decreased level remain? When will we start to see an easing of physical distancing restrictions and a return to some normality in terms of economic activity? And also, how long will it take and what steps do we need to take to rebuild ridership to pre-COVID levels? That's probably a key concern for us right now, is we've experienced this decrease in ridership. What are the steps and what things we need to do in the future to get that ridership back when the situation improves? Also, adding to some of our challenges has been a high rate of operator absenteeism since the increased restrictions were implemented. The operators are truly our front line. They're essential worker, they're essential employees, and as such, have a pretty high exposure to and risk to COVID and the public. So some have chosen to take vacation time, or some have chosen to book off family or personal time, and that's their decision, but it has resulted in some missed trips and service across the province. So we've really been working with our local governments and working to proactively manage this across the province, and we have been working to also do some service reductions that line up with some of the ridership decreases that we've seen. This reduced ridership has also opened up space on buses, but physical distancing and the capacity limits that I spoke to before have limited our bus capacity. So based on ridership data for Squamish, there's still room, and again, Bronson will speak a little bit to it, but there's still room at peak times on our buses, even with the physical distancing and capacity measures that have been implemented. And we still expect essential workers and people dependent on transit as their only mode of transportation to continue to utilize our services, and we want to be there for those passengers that rely on us. So moving to Slide 7, you can see here, you know, our entire organization is working hard to analyze possible outcomes and scenarios that could be possible over the coming months. I'm sure as you can appreciate, they are numerous, as you can see by this slide, which really kind of outlines some different scenarios that we're kind of looking at. Bronson will die deeper into this later in the presentation, but these scenarios will likely differ from one transit system to the next, so we really need to work with our local government partners on the ground in our different communities and really monitor the situation as hopefully it improves and see what service implementations we need to do, what priorities need to be shifted as we work to come out of the COVID situation. So looking to the future, what we're most concerned about at this point is really regaining that ridership as physical distancing measures are eased and people transition back into the workforce and we get the economic engine started back up. Will we need, kind of, some of the questions we're asking ourselves, will we need to allocate resources to rebuilding that ridership back up to pre-COVID levels? What will that take? How will our local priorities and budgets need to be realigned with potential change, that decrease in ridership? And where we have reduced service to better aligns, or where we've reduced service to better align with decreased ridership, how quickly can we ratchet that service back up as restrictions are eased and we see ridership rebound? These are all ongoing discussions we're having internally, and we'll continue to have those with our local government partners over the next few months and really ensure that we're working closely to monitor and adjust to local trends in Squamish as hopefully we start to see some recovery. So just on Slide 8, other actions. So some other actions that we are working on or have taken, we continue to work on local governments on cost containment and rightsizing service levels to meet decreased ridership and demand. BC Transit, we obviously recognize that there's some fiscal challenges as a result of COVID, so really working with our local governments to make sure that our service levels are appropriate for the current ridership levels that we're seeing is key. We have seen, one of the challenges we have seen is that a lot of our suppliers have been notifying us of delays in manufacturing and delivery timelines for everything from buses, the parts, and electronic equipment, and that's really impacted our service delivery and timelines for some of our service expansions. So as a result, last week, BC Transit's Board of Directors approved a decision to defer our fiscal 2020/21, our planned service expansions, forward into next fiscal, as there's significant ongoing uncertainty as to when services will be able to return to normal and expansions we have implemented at this point. Really, this comes from the ridership declines that we've experienced, the significant delays in expansion bus resources from manufacturers that we've seen, and just the uncertainty with future local government and provincial budgets. So we just feel it's a prudent decision to push those expansions into 2021, so we give ourselves a little bit of breathing room to really assess the situation, ensure we have our priorities aligned, ensure we have the budgets there to support the initiatives that we want to put into place and move forward. So again, we'll continue to work directly with our local government partners and staff here in Squamish to readjust as your local priorities require, and ensure we're delivering on the key priorities for you and your residents. We'll also look at the impact in this presentation, these revised timelines will have on your expansions and future priorities, and Bronson, again, will speak a little bit to that. So that will get us to Slide 9, and this is where Bronson will talk a little bit about some local impacts. So I thank you very much for your time, and I'll be available at the end for any questions from Mayor, Chair, and Council. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. So I'll continue the presentation now, getting into a little bit more detailed information about ridership levels in Squamish. Following that, I will be discussing where we are at currently with how we're going to proceed and move forward with planning expansions and planning the future of transit service within Squamish. So this graph here indicates the average boarding per day, per week, starting off from January 6 of this year to approximately, what is it, at the start of April, oh, no, middle of April, in Week 16. You can see here that Week 12 is the date, is March 16, and that's when physical distancing protocols began, and you can see a pretty severe drop in ridership, approximately 50% drop in ridership for Squamish since the implementation of the physical distancing protocols. That ridership level has plateaued going into Week 17 now and Week 18, which is good to see, but this has definitely made us alter how we are proceeding with service levels in Squamish. On Slide 10, we had previously set up a service expansion for June 15. This is the same as previous years, to introduce Route 5 South Parks. This year, we are not proceeding with Route 5 South Parks as per direction last week, but we will be proceeding with the Riders' Guide change as the main transit exchange has been shifted from the Chieftain Center to moving in front of the Squamish Library. So we are still anticipating to have that update in the Riders' Guide for June 15, but it will be without the Route 5 South Parks currently. On Slide 11, last year's tips and what was signed off on by Council was what you see in front of you, this table in front of you. We split up the expansion to have 500 hours for the South Parks this summer, which looked to fill in the service gaps at the peak times. We also added in a stop at the Adventure Center and a stop at the Chancery Casino. The next 1,000 hours of that expansion for 2020/21 would be aimed towards the fall, so September, where we look to improve service on the Route 9 and add service to the core transit network. So unfortunately, as Rob indicated before, we have to defer these expansions. So if you go to the next slide, I've outlined what this new TIPS sheet could look like for us this year. So in the first two columns, we see the old AOA period and the new AOA period. We'll be shifting, as per what we would recommend, we could shift 1,500 hours to 21/22 in June 21, so that would be at the same timeline as when we started the South Parks this year. Currently, what we have is the description is to evaluate the on-time performance, the Route 9 weekend service, reducing combined trips, and as well, filling in the service on Route 5. Due to COVID, we're not exactly sure how our future is going to look in transit. Priorities are going to change, and that also means that these descriptions could change. So we have essentially shifted everything a year with understanding that we might be pivoting with exactly how we utilize these hours. And next couple of slides will actually speak to exactly what we're planning on doing, planning on doing with our planning process. It's still very early on. If you can go to the next slide, just kind of reiterating what Rob has stated about our response to the pandemic. We're calling it a pandemic recovery and response plan. We have a lot of uncertainties right now, and we're still facing them. We're not sure when the ridership will return. We're not sure who's going to utilize the bus in the event that the physical distancing protocols have been dropped. We don't know if there will be a second wave of COVID-19, and we're not sure how the province, municipalities, and the federal government are going to respond to changes within COVID. So for that reason, we're looking at scenario planning at BC Transit for different options of how to respond to this pandemic. We're not, we haven't fully rounded out exactly what this looks like yet, but it's essentially going to take the place of the Transit Future Action Plan at the time being. We postponed the Transit Future Action Plan in Squamish as well as every other community within BC. So we're looking to fill in the current uncertainties with this recovery and response plan that lists out about four different scenarios, all based on how each system will be responding to the pandemic. Systems that have high tourism rates like Squamish and Whistler could be affected one way, and systems where they have a high university population like Victoria and Kelowna could be affected another way. So we're still finessing how this plan will be rolled out, but over the next couple of months, we'll be looking to endeavor in some sort of engagement with both local partners as well as the public with what could get them back onto the bus and what could be successful. But as it stands right now, this is still very early on in this process. We have not finalized anything, so I'll be working with Squamish, the District of Squamish staff, to determine and develop the next stages of this plan. If you go to Slide 14, kind of, you can reiterate this a couple of times now. Originally, we had 1,000 hours for September to improve on-time performance, weekend service to Route 9, and combined trips on Route 1 and Route 2 would be reduced, which would actually add frequency to those two routes. So due to the pandemic, we'll continue to work with staff to ensure the transit service provided best matches the demand and safety protocol, with understanding that there's not going to be an expansion. And as I said before, we're not exactly certain what this will look like yet. It'll all depend on the direction we get from federal, provincial, and municipality direction. So that's the end of the slide. If you go to the next slide, the questions section.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Rob and Bronson. Council, any questions? Mayor Elliott.
So when, given all these different scenarios and how it could roll out, when do we expect to see?
Oh, we can't hear you because the microphone's now over here. Hold on.
Given the different scenarios, when would you expect to be back in Squamish to present sort of plans for going forward and ideas for our three-year MOU?
I can take back that one. I think right now what we're planning is, obviously, as we change the, if there's any changes to any of the priorities, we need to be working with our local government and staff to make sure we're aligned to what those are. We still need to secure a commitment for any future expansions in the next fiscal. So right now, the plan would be that we would revisit with our local government partners around September to reanalyze their priorities, make sure our TIPS list is correct, obviously, with the deferral and future expansions. Again, things may shift. But right now, we're targeting kind of a September timeline to, between now and then, to kind of work on that, and hopefully some things flatten out in terms of the COVID situation, so that by September, we can realign some commitments and get either a revision of our current MOU put together or an adjustment to that MOU. So we're aiming for that September timeline.
Has there been a commitment from the province to hold over the matching expansion funding into next year's budget?
There has not been a commitment to that at this time.
Thank you. Council, any further questions? Councilor Patengill?
Just a bit bigger picture question. There had already been a push for more EV buses, and we've seen with this pandemic, a requirement for rear loading, which is main charging fares, a challenge. So it makes me wonder about when in all of this are we thinking about redesign or at least to rethink about what a bus is, how it's cleaned, or how it's designed? Because it seems we've got a few things that might make us want to think about what does a bus look like, and so when does that sort of discussion happen?
Great, great question. Let's make sure, oh, I'm muted still. Great question. I think, as most likely in every industry, this situation is making us rethink everything from our physical layout of the buses to operator and passenger safety, to such things as even electronic fare collection and different opportunities to ensure that we're maintaining safety on our buses. So all of those items right now are, if you look at that scenario planning, are kind of thrown into the mix of that scenario planning. So what does that future of the bus look like? I think that is being discussed and worked on right now, but what the outcome could be, I couldn't speculate on at this point.
Pull mic over that way. Real tricky, isn't it?
Yeah, you have to move it in really close.
Oh, there's no camera. All right. I'm just figuring out what the in-council chamber setup is like here, so thanks for your patience. I did have a question in terms of with the decrease in ridership and obviously not collecting fares since kind of middle of March, what impact has that had in terms of our budgets for fare collection, given that that usually is put towards the municipal portion of transit service?
Yeah, I can probably speak a little bit to that as well. So we recognize that loss of revenue has a significant impact to our local municipalities in terms of their ability to offset the cost of transit. One of our number-one priorities right now is continuing to be with our counterparts in the Canadian Urban Transit Association to lobby the federal government for relief of some of, or all of, the lost revenue that we're currently experiencing. So those efforts are ongoing. We're also obviously having discussions provincially, and, you know, it's been our commitment to, since we implemented rear door loading, to look for support to regain that revenue. What I think needs to be also considered is the fact that, yes, there is no revenue right now, but if you look at the 50% decline in ridership, just that alone would have reduced, unfortunately, reduced Squamish's overall revenue by about 50% coming in. So there's some interesting things at play there, but we have extended But we have extended rear-door loading until May 31st, so we moved it to May 31st, so it was the end of April, and we considered May 15th or May 31st. But because of monthly bus pass purchases, those types of things, it just makes it easier administratively, and it buys us a little bit more time to try to implement some other measures on buses, on our medium and heavy-duty buses, to ensure we have physical distancing and safety for our drivers, operators, and staff. That May 31st is hopefully enough time to give us an opportunity to implement some other measures that will allow us to reimplement fare collection come June.
Thank you. Counselor Patengill?
Thank you. You talked about pushing some changes off until 2021 and beyond. Can you just speak to the impacts this year on HandyDART services?
Yeah. And Bronson's part of the presentation, we didn't cover off HandyDART, but we have seen a very parallel decline in HandyDART ridership that we have in our conventional transit systems. We do have flexibility in our HandyDART systems in terms of being able to adjust the number of vehicles that we have on the road at any one time. So our overall service levels for HandyDART have not changed because it's more of an on-demand system. We've just been able to adjust our delivery of the service to line up with demand. So currently, that is the strategy we're employing with HandyDART. We believe HandyDART obviously is a valuable service, and as conventional ridership returns, we expect HandyDART ridership to also return. So currently, this time, we're maintaining those service levels for HandyDART, and we're just adjusting our capacity as demand requires.
Counsel, any further questions for staff, for the folks in BC Transit? We don't have a motion in front of us at all. I will say, it deeply saddens me that we've had to reduce transit service and potentially postpone, or definitely postponing, expansion of service. It was definitely core to a lot of the strategic work that counsel is trying to put forward, and generally is really important for our community moving forward. But recognize that these are unprecedented times, and appreciate the shifts that you have had to make as an organization in order to try and address some of the physical distancing restrictions, keeping your drivers safe and the riders safe as well. So thank you for the update. As disappointing as it is that we are postponing expansions, I think it makes good fiscal sense at this point, and it's good for our community to know that's what's going on as we head into the rest of 2020 and 2021. And with that, I think we'll wrap up this part of the presentation. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for joining us. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the Alternative Municipal Tax Collection Scheme. I believe Ms. Claussen is here with us to walk us through this presentation. I'll pass it over to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Linda Claussen, and I'm the Acting CFO. Today, we want to talk about the proposed alternative tax collection scheme, and I'm just wondering if I can see this slide.
Ms. Arthur's is just bringing them up. There we go.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there have been several measures taken in our community to prevent the spread of the pandemic, such as business closures and distancing. However, the impact to our economy could be unprecedented. During the last seven weeks or so, the province has issued several economic aids to help our communities. On April 16th, the Ministry of the Municipal Affairs and Housing issued a news release with several financial measures to aid local government. In this presentation, we will go through some background process information, the new temporary legislation related to property taxes, and finally, the proposed changes, or also known as an alternative tax scheme. Next slide, please. I just wanted to go through our current timeline that we would follow in a normal year. Typically, we would adopt a tax rate early in May, which I hope we still will. We have collection rates in July. We have collection rates of about 87% up to July 2nd and 97% by December 31st. We collect about $29 million in property taxes, $13 million in utilities, $12.6 million in school taxes, and $2.4 million in other requisitions, for a total of $57 million. The district collects about 65% from residential and 25% from commercial. And near the end, or the last Monday in September, we typically would have a tax bill, and that would be for those property owners who are delinquent, about three years of non-payment. So that would be our typical property tax and utilities timeline. Next slide, please. The legislation we, or, sorry. The community charter allows for municipalities to set a general tax collection scheme or an alternative tax collection scheme. The District of Squamish has been using a general tax collection scheme with a due date of July 2nd. However, in the community charter, Sections 235 and 236, allows for an alternative tax collection scheme to set at one or a more due date penalties and penalties. Property owners may elect, if we choose an alternative tax collection scheme, if property owners wanted to choose the general tax collection scheme, they would have to elect to do that. And the second bullet there, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Property Tax Defirmment Program. There's no change here, but it is an important program for the communities. There's two programs there, one for, they call it regular, for people that are over 55, and then there's a second one for families with children. This may be an important program that we would like to promote more as we move through Next slide, please. So on April 16th, the provincial government released some temporary new legislation. They reduced the school tax for commercial property by 25%, and for the District of Squamish, that would represent about $900,000. They postponed the late penalty for commercial properties, classes 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, to October 1st, but they kept the due date the same. And they have allowed a delay in the remittance of school tax to the end of 2020. Normally, we would pay the remittance of school tax, July and August would be about 75% of it, and then the rest we would trickle in through the remainder of the year. Next slide, please. Municipalities in the province are using a variety of schemes available to them. We looked at the Government Finance Officers Association Forum, and there was, prior to April 16th, there were people choosing, or districts choosing, several different due dates, different penalty dates, and things like that. We looked at Lake Country, we looked at Coquitlam. And finally, once the announcement was made on April 16th, many of the municipalities are changing their penalties. So in the proposed alternative tax scheme, we are proposing a shift in the penalties. Instead of from July 2nd and August 1st, a shift to October 1st and December 1st, 5% for each occurrence. At this time, the district's current software does not accommodate, if we had no, made no changes in our bylaws, it could not accommodate the separate penalty. However, they are working on it at this time. Yesterday, I spoke with our legal counsel regarding the proposed alternative tax scheme and the possibility of a penalty abatement, as I mentioned in my report. For those property owners who missed deferment application deadlines or made administrative errors, however, the legal counsel did recommend against the penalty abatement option, as he felt that it was a statutory requirement. So I would not be recommending that penalty abatement portion. Also, back in 2016, the District of Squamish amalgamated property taxes and utilities on the same notice with the same collection cycle. Over the last few years, and it's taken quite a few years of communication with our residents, we finally have, I think, they understand that our property taxes and utilities are due on the same date. If counsel supports this alternative tax scheme, staff is recommending keeping the utilities and the taxes consistent and amending the applicable bylaws. This will provide a consistent messaging for the property owners and easily understood. Separating these includes separate notices sent, so we would send them twice, separate due dates, and separate payment visits to the municipality if the municipality is open. It could be complicated and an additional administrative burden. Next slide, please. The new legislation, as mentioned earlier, was not changing the due date. It simply changed the penalty date to after September 30th. Except for school taxes and other government requisitions are still due July and August, and that represents about $2.4 million. We are recommending keeping the due date still at July 2nd to encourage those that can pay their property taxes, especially those mortgage companies and deferment programs. We need to keep in mind that the district is still providing services, and it's really important that we receive our funding to provide those services. Next slide, please. If counsel supports this recommendation, that staff will bring forward the alternative tax collection scheme bylaw, will also bring forward the amended utility bylaws, will work on a comprehensive communication plan to promote the defirmment program and appropriate collections, and meet forward with the property tax and utility billing process. Therefore, staff recommends that we bring forward at the next business meeting on May 5th, an alternative tax collection bylaw scheme, or tax collection scheme bylaw that supports the objectives highlighted in the report, and that staff bring forward to the special meeting, May 5th, the amended solid waste sewer rates and water rates bylaws that support the penalty schedule of the alternative tax collection scheme. Next slide. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Claussen. Counsel, any questions? Counselor French?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just interested in a little bit more on how the October 1st and December 1st dates were arrived at. Was that a situation of, like, throw a dart, a dartboard, or was a little more thought put into it?
The thought process would be that the commercial bylaw, or the new legislation for the commercial properties, said after September 30th, so we suggested October 1st. On the December date, the thought process was that often, if it's later than December, or December 31st, for example, quite often the municipality is closed, they often close, it's hard, difficult for individuals to pay those bills. So that was a thought process at that time.
And a follow-up, are other communities lining up with those same dates? Are we sort of in a situation where the District of Squamish, along with many, many other communities, are using these same two dates?
It's difficult, because many of the communities passed their bylaws before the April 16th. Notices came out from the provincial government, so they may have had a penalty date of September 30th, for example, instead of October 1st. And I've seen one municipality where they had only one penalty date of, I think it was September 30th, and they forgave the other 5%, so they had one only of 5%. Like, there was, the direction from the province was late, and so a lot of the municipalities decided, just decided to move forward, given the circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Patengill?
So my understanding was that we couldn't waive penalties. You know, we had to have a date, we had to charge a penalty. What we were able to adjust was the date, but it sounds like we have some ability to waive some penalty amounts?
When I spoke with the lawyer, no. He would not recommend, he did not suggest that, he suggested that it was a statutory requirement to keep your penalties at 10%.
Mayor Elliott? Oh, sorry. Counselor Patengill, you have a follow-up?
Just related, thank you. Does the same apply for utilities, or do we have a bit more flexibility? And I'm not thinking we should do this, but if we wanted to push off and charge everyone for 2020's utilities in 2021, and bill for 2020 and 2021 in 2021, do we have the legal authority to do that, or it's much like property tax, where we are obligated to collect it this year?
Yes, we could do that. As far as I know, I would have to, of course, talk to the lawyer, but I don't think we have the same statutory requirements for utilities that we do for taxes. However, we are providing services that need funding.
Mayor Elliott?
One thing that I was thinking about is, we spoke to it this morning, but do you feel that we're in a good cash flow position? Many communities are talking about their inability to meet their cash flow because of lack of revenue. Taxation is our one source of revenue, so delaying payment, how does that impact us this year?
It will really depend. I struggle with this too, and working through it. I've looked at several different types of scenarios. Because the school tax, we don't have to submit that right away. We get the benefit of using that for our cash flow to the end of the year. So I feel confident that we're okay to the end of the year. With this delay of three months, we can manage that. It really depends on how the homeowners respond to the collections, and it's difficult for us to say with certainty how that will come about.
That's fair. I think...
We can say, I think we can say with certainty that the mortgage holder, mortgage companies will pay, and we have a few deferred taxes that will pay. But the general public, it's pretty hard to understand if they'll pay on the due date.
So that would be one comment, and I've heard this from the minister as well, is that part of our communication...
will pay. And we have a few deferred taxes that will pay. But the general public, it's pretty hard to understand if they'll pay on the due date.
So that would be one comment, and I've heard this from the minister as well, is that part of our communication should definitely promote the deferment programs, but also explaining that this is our one source of revenue and that the services that you have come to rely on depend on you paying your property taxes. So for those homeowners that can, is to please pay on time. And I think that has to be part of our messaging to the community, so that we can avoid a more dire situation at the end of the year. This helps with our cash flow. So I think, however we decide to message that, it's important.
Thank you, Counselor Herford.
Thank you. There was a mention there of the mortgage companies paying, and of course, a lot of mortgages include sort of a collection of the property tax portion. Do we, what's our understanding of what percentage of our taxpayers pay under such circumstances?
We have about $4 million of property tax payments from mortgage companies out of 29 million.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to understand the timing of the, projected timing of the cash flow. Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? I have another one with regards to the cash flow component. So maybe this is just a bit scenario planning in my head, but Ms. Claussen, you mentioned that we typically have around an 87% collection rate for that July 2nd deadline. If that drops to 20%, you feel confident that with the ability to hold the school taxes and other revenue sources, that we can kind of manage our cash flow till that October date?
I feel confident we can manage that cash flow to the October date. My concern would be if they become in arrears after September 31st.
Thank you. Counselor Race, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Go ahead.
Just through the staff, there's some portion of the community, myself included, that defers taxes, which in effect is a loan from the province. And so the province would be funding the district for those taxes, just like the mortgage money is. Do we have any sense of what percentage that is of our taxpayers?
Yes. For deferment, again, it's about 2%.
2%?
Yeah.
Thank you. And is that typically paid by the province around July 1st?
Yeah. Well, they'll pay us when they, when all the paperwork is complete, they'll send us the money.
Thank you.
We have generally about 75% of our homeowners paying us right around June and July.
And then a follow-up? Okay. I have a question, and then I'll put Mayor Elliott on the list. In terms of thinking about collection of taxes, given that our municipal hall is currently closed, and we obviously can't entirely foresee into what the future looks like, but have we started to give some thought around how we might be able to collect taxes through when notices go out mid-May to July?
Yeah. Well, we do have, we call it telebanking, but the EFT program, we can accept through that program. They can pay at the bank as well. We need to further understand where this leads in the next few weeks.
I think that'll be an important part to-
Also, they can-
The planning and communications of how this all rolls out, or what are the options. It's a tricky one, though, given that City Hall is currently closed.
Also, they do have, we do have a Dropbox in City Hall, and we do have a postal system.
Very true. Mayor Elliott?
That was my question. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Counsel, any further questions? Not seeing any. We do have a recommendation in front of us for consideration. Are these, we'll probably do these separately, right, Ms. Arthurs? Anybody willing to put forward the first recommendation that staff bring forward to the special business meeting? An alternative tax collection scheme bylaw that supports the objectives outlined in the report from Financial Services as discussed Committee of the Hall on April 28th? Yeah. Moved by Counselor Race, seconded by Counselor Herford. Discussion? I will speak to it. I want to thank staff for the consideration of this and for bringing it forward. I think it is an important piece of what the municipality can do to try and support both our residents and the commercial businesses. We're already given the leniency to October 1st through the province. So I appreciate the creative thinking here and trying to see how we can support our community through these challenging times. It is a balancing act. This is our cash flow, and it's what allows us to maintain the services that people depend on, the basics of that being water, sewer, sanitary. And so recognizing that we don't want to push the envelope too far on this one, but I do think that it'll be, it'll be appreciated by our community that we are trying to find the solutions that we can. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We have a second one, similar about a bylaw that supports the penalty schedule for the alternative tax collection scheme for solid waste sewer rates and water rates. Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Any comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Claussen.
Thank you.
We will see you back at the special business meeting next week. Next on our agenda, we have a COVID-19 Emergencies Operations Center update. And I see Ms. Glenday just joined us. I'll pass it over to you if you have anything to update.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the COVID situation itself, no updates beyond what we've seen in the situation reports and the media. But I did want to update counsel that the EOC team has been switching and working on what we're calling a recovery team. So at an operational level, I heard you talking about how we're going to collect taxes. So how do we reopen municipal halls? Should that be the next step? Tearing in the recreation programming, and coming up with different scenarios and ramping back up. And so that is forthcoming. And as we get more formal information and it's more fully based, we'll come with formal reports to counsel. But wanted to give you that update, that that's where we're focusing our work now.
That is great to hear. I know many people are encouraged by the conversations that are happening with the ideas around what reopening might look like. And I know it's still a long process, but it's great to hear that our staff are thinking that way as well. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Glenday? Counselor Patengill?
Just in the interest of planning for the worst and hoping for the best, is the EOC looking at, because there is some thought that, like many flu and cold viruses, you see an uptick again in the fall and winter, so sort of preventative planning around that? Or, yeah, are you working on any of that sort of thing at all?
That's a great question. Thank you, too, Chair. We absolutely are considering that in our planning, that we may go back into physical distancing should there be a spike. The good news is, we have a template now. So hopefully, it'll be less bumpy should that be the case.
Any further questions, counsel? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the update, Ms. Glenday. And with that, I will entertain a motion to close. Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Herford. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries.